Welcome, everybody, to our Oktoberfest City Commission Meeting. Thank you all for being here. We'll call the meeting to order. And Jen, will you lead us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. Let us begin this meeting by taking a brief moment of silence and reflect on the lives impacted by cancer as we begin October Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, we'll move on to presentations. We have the Dyslexia Awareness Month, and we are going to ask Commissioner Gow to read that. And you can tell everybody why.
Because I'm proud to tell everybody that I have dyslexia. And Mayor, thank you. And the reason I asked to have this brought forward is just because the more we talk about learning disabilities, the better understanding we have and the better awareness we have, the better society we are. And that's what this month is about, as far as dyslexia awareness. Dyslexia is a learning disability that disrupts your brain processes in written language. If you have dyslexia, you are, for those who don't know, you're neurodivergent, which is a very fancy word. I'm very proud of that. I even have a T-shirt, forgot to wear it. It actually just means that your brain works a little differently than everybody else. I was diagnosed at the age of four by my kindergarten teacher, so a shout-out to Ms. Northrup. Thank you very much. And that was in the mid-'60s. That was a long time ago. And there wasn't much available in the public school system at the time, at least in Florida. The best my parents could do was find a private tutor, but they were unaffordable. I also had ADHD, which carried its own extra burden on my parents in dealing with teaching me to read. But today, we've come so far, we have schools dedicated to dyslexia. And other abilities. One of those schools here in Pinellas County is Eliza Nelson Elementary School. And at this time, I have the pleasure of, I think the entire school is here tonight, to ask Hema Adaya, Principal of Eliza Nelson, and staff to come forward to receive the proclamation and then to say a few words. So while they're coming up, I will do my due diligence with the proclamation. Dyslexia Awareness Month. Whereas neurological in origin, dyslexia influences the way the brain processes information and is characterized by difficulties with reading, writing, and spelling. And whereas dyslexia has no relationship to intelligence and affects approximately 1 in 5 people, and those afflicted must overcome challenges in school, work, and personal growth. Whereas early identification, alternative instruction, and extra support from friends, family, and teachers can contribute to the success of dyslexic students in the classroom, in life, and later on, in employment. And whereas many people with dyslexia have gone on to accomplish great things, among the many dyslexia success stories are Thomas Edison, Steven Spielberg, F. Scott Fitzgerald, Charles Schwartz, Jeff Gow, and many others.
I was going to say the U. Davis.
And whereas greater recognition and understanding are necessary to ensure individuals living with dyslexia are accurately identified and provide with appropriate services to lead productive lives. Now therefore, I, Jeff Gow, by the virtue of the authority vested in me by the Mayor of the City of Dunedin, and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Dyslexia Awareness Month in Dunedin and encourage everyone to learn more about dyslexia and to celebrate the many achievements of adolescents, students, and adults with dyslexia.
Thank you very much.
Please.
Thank you to the entire Commission, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Thank you for inviting us here. We are so proud of our little school in Palm Harbor, where we have many students that come from Dunedin and neighboring areas, because we are a district application program, so you don't have to live in the very nearby area. It's a larger attendance area, and so we're proud to serve all of these neighboring communities for students with dyslexia. So we offer a multi-sensory approach and structured literacy program. And I want to introduce some of the teachers and our Assistant Principal that are here today to thank all of you, because they are the rock stars who do the work every day. So I want to introduce our teachers who do the work with students with dyslexia.
Please.
Hi, my name is Cher Williger, and I work with our students. And I currently teach second grade. I've taught fourth and fifth. I adore working with these kids because of the amount of growth and success that you see. So thank you very much for allowing us to do this work, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jackie Quinn. I'm an ESE teacher at Eliza Nelson, and I also work in second grade, third grade this year. And I work with the students who are struggling. And what I love most is these students have had a fear of going to school, have not liked going to school, and now we're getting reports from the students with their smiles and the parents that they're excited to get to go to school. They've got their clothes out the night before they're ready to go, and that does my heart good.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Crystal Kohler. I am one of the fifth-grade teachers there for Eliza Nelson, and actually, my daughter has dyslexia, so I have it very personal. So as a parent and a teacher, I love seeing the growth that it makes and giving these kids the opportunity and seeing how happy they are and all the success that they have, and they really feel like they belong after being in our program.
Very good.
Hi, I'm Calla Alfred. I'm the Assistant Principal. Thank you all for your recognition and support, and I'm really excited to know that someday, I'm sure, some of our students will be on that list.
Yeah.
They can be.
There you go. Thank you, ladies, for coming. Okay.
And get really close to you. Thank you. All right, so let me make sure I can see everybody. All right, again, ready? I'm going to take a few. One, two, three. This way as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you, Commissioner. We're very proud of what you've accomplished and how you got here.
I've come so hard.
Okay, now it's time for citizen input. Anybody wishing to come forward, please feel free to do so. Give us your name and address for the record, and the clock of three minutes is right up there. Hi, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Lisa Hughes, and I live at 952 Virginia Street, apartment 210, in the Heather Lakes condominium complex. Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. I'm here tonight to speak about the new pickleball courts that are going to be installed at Eagle Scout Park. And I understand the need for the pickleball courts, and when I bought in that community, I knew that my condo backs right up to where the tennis courts are located, and I realized that there is lighting there. I would like to speak with you about the lighting. I have some pictures I'd like to show you, and I brought some copies, just to let you know. May I distribute them?
You can give them right to the City Clerk.
Currently, the lights are supposed to go out at 10:30, and they frequently don't go out at 10:30. And there is a sign at the courts that's on the box where you turn on the lights, and the sign, at this point, is unreadable in the daytime and completely illegible. I'm sorry.
Okay, we got the gist.
Okay. Additionally, there's nothing on the sign that indicates that people should turn the lights off when they leave. The lights are supposed to go off at 10:30. Frequently, they don't go off until 10:45. I have called the Recreation Department on a number of occasions to let them know that the lights were still on at 11:00 and 12:00 o'clock at night.
Okay, so we'll check the timer for sure.
Okay. I'd also like to ask that maybe it could be reconsidered, the timing that the lights are allowed to be on, maybe until 10:00 at night? You know, there's housing that's very close to the field, and that's pretty late. It is a 55 and up community.
I used to live right behind there, so I know exactly what you're talking about.
Okay. Additionally, I walk over there a lot of times and turn out the lights when people leave, just because, you know, that's how I was raised. And then a dog walker comes at 10:00 and turns the lights on, and they walk their dogs, and then they leave, and they leave the lights on as well. They also play with the dogs on the courts, and I'm not really sure if that's the intended use of the courts. So maybe some information to residents regarding that would be helpful. So my request would be maybe that we could make the lights only operable between 5:00 and 10:00 p.m. People also come now when it's dark out in the morning.
That's okay. Go ahead and finish up.
Thank you. To walk their dogs, and they turn the lights on at 6:00 in the morning. So maybe if the lights could only be operable from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Jennifer, you'll speak with Parks and Rec about it? Those are pretty easy fixes.
I'll reach out to them tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask one question? I mean, are you able to set it for a definite time, like even if they're on part of the time, like they go off automatically, can't be turned on early or late? I mean, I assume you can.
I know that we can set.
But they're blocked out almost.
Yeah, I'm not sure what type of a timer that they have on those lights, but I'll check into it and let you know.
Hi, welcome. Name and address for the record.
I'm Eric Curtis, Dunedin Marina Slip Number Two. My son is dyslexic also. He's 16. Unfortunately, it took a few years in Pinellas County to correctly diagnose him, which wasn't great. Same thing, we had him in tutoring twice a week, and he's finally getting caught up. But the strange thing at the time, and like I said, he's only 16, freshman at Dunedin, is, to my knowledge, there is no programs in Pinellas County schools for it, which there used to be, but there, for some reason, it got dropped, which is strange, because 1 out of 5 people are diagnosed. So hopefully, we can catch this a little bit. The other thing I just want to talk about a little bit was the Marina after the last storm. We went through some stuff, seen it. It was discussed in the MAC meeting a little bit, but there was a couple items that I don't believe we discussed. We put a lot of money into the security, the cameras and all that kind of stuff, but we now know that soon as we have no power, we have no security down there. So if we turn the power off, not we, me, but the city for safety, but at that point, we lost our security system. So if we were to have an actual storm where we had, you know, long-term, that's probably the biggest time that we'd want that there for us. In addition, I know that, and you all know that I'm a liveboard down there, that we're losing some of our liveboards to age and a few other items, but the liveboards are the eyes of the Marina. So at night, when we go home or walk by, we see the boats, and there's a lot of things that we catch and report. It might not even go to the city, but we call the boat owners and say, hey, there's a problem with your boat, let's, you know, look at this. Where even though we do have the cameras, they don't catch that stuff. The cameras are good for certain spots, but not everything. So please remember that the liveboards are important to all the surroundings. Some of the other Marinas that don't have liveboards have, not some, actually, everyone around us, has nighttime security. So Marker One does, the City of Clearwater does. So liveboards are a big advantage to people moving around down there at night. We did have a few issues with pilings being short up in Slips One and Two. It was discussed very shortly in the MAC meeting, and the comment was made, well, there's a lot of other short ones in the Marina, but Slips One and Two take the brunt of every storm that runs through there. And I can guarantee you, if I wasn't around during the storms, that we'd have holes in the boats, just because they're so short that the boats run up over top of them. I can supply pictures next time. At a normal tide, our boats are higher than the pilings without a storm or storm surge. Thanks for hearing me out. Thanks.
Thank you. Jennifer, you're the liaison to the Marina Advisory Committee, so you'll address those things or...
I am, Mayor. Just for Mr. Curtis's edification, though, we did, the security cameras were working all night long. I mean, we were watching them.
With or without electricity?
From the Emergency Operations Center, yes.
Okay. So you were able to access them and see them?
I was watching the Marina. I went to sleep for a couple hours, but yeah.
I mean, I know you sent us screenshots of what was going on.
Right.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Hi, welcome. Name and address for the record.
My name is Janet Coretti. I live at 830 Oxford Court, which is also behind Eagle Scout, about the pickleballs, and I understand the need for them. I don't believe in the "not in my backyard." I'm cool with them being there, but I don't know how far the planning has gotten. There is an issue with the lights even now, which Lisa spoke about, but also with the extended amount of courts that are going to be there. Has there been any planning put in for noise mitigation to lessen the noise that's going to be, if you have 8 to 10 courts, and they're all being used at once, and they're all being used at 9:00 o'clock at night? That's a lot.
I have not seen the plans, but we'll definitely take that into consideration, for sure.
I mean, it's just, you know... Especially at night during the day, but, you know, when you're trying to go to sleep, and it's right there, it can be, with that many of them, that's a lot going at the same time. So that would be appreciated if that could be looked into also.
For sure, and I would also probably, I'm making a big assumption, and you know what they say about that, but, I mean, during the summer, you know, sometimes it doesn't get dark till 8:45 or 9:00. So you might have more play during the summer, but I can't imagine you're going to have a lot of play during the winter at that time, when it's been darker longer. So hopefully, we'll sort all of that out.
We are, Mayor, and I have had discussions with the Director of Parks and Recreation about noise baffling, you know, procedures, and it's definitely in consideration.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
As well as, I hear that a new type of a pickleball is...
Less noisy?
Right.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure that we are not going, we're not the only community that's been dealing with this type of thing, so.
After having come back from ICMA, pickleball's a big discussion.
I'm sure. All kinds of things about pickleball, right? Okay. Hi, come on down.
I have information to share.
City Clerk?
Okay. I used to live in an apartment complex, and there was a tennis court behind me, and every morning I would wake up and I would hear people going, "Ah," like trying to hit the ball.
Okay, so speak into the microphone and name and address for the record.
Hello?
There you go.
My name is Carolyn James. My address is 2470 Bay Shore Boulevard, Dunedin. I am here for a Marina late fee charge that should have been a simple thing, but has turned into an unsimple thing, so I'm just going to read this, because it's easier. In July, my slip rent was not received by the Harbor Master Office due to lost mail. No notice was sent. How are you to know if your rent is late if no notice is sent? In August, invoice mail showed double rent plus late fee. I contacted the Finance Department immediately. After much discussion, it was decided to remove the late fee, as seven years of payments have been made on time and none lost by the mailman. In September, invoice mail stated a new late fee added and a 10% junk fee added. Staff said that they used the first payment to pay the July rent and then claimed August rent late as a replacement check was still in the mail. As this is one incident, not two separate issues, one fee should apply. Staff was informed as to what was going on on multiple occasions, and accommodation should be considered. Portal did not work correctly due to technical trouble. One late fee waived in a lifetime is a bit harsh. Unforgiving behavior for good payment history. Staff gave incorrect information. City manager was told three late fees had been waived, not true. 2017 was a slip change and price adjustment. July and August fees were one lost check in the mail. Proof of online payment was produced. City manager trusts staff, and she depends on correct information to make decision. Staff gives incorrect information. So there's some emails in your package that I gave you, and so I've added the sentence to "that," not to this late charge thing. Taxpayers do not want to pay staff to gossip or email on or any other communication. Citizens do not respect city government or staff due to these types of shenanigans and bullying. Simple customer service request unable to be handled by staff shows need for correction. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, as it pertains to the late payment, there was one, I was informed by staff that there was the one in 2017. Okay.
All right, well, we're not going to go back and forth. I'm just asking her to provide some answers or look into for the future, but we're not going to go back and forth. Go ahead.
Thank you. So our Marina rules, as you know, Ms. James, and some of the commissioners, permits one late fee exemption, and then the late fee applies. My understanding is, as I said, that there was a late fee that was incurred in 2017 or thereafter. That was the one. And so we actually had, during the course of some of these email, the email correspondence, the, about 17, there are about 17 late fees, all of which were paid by the customers. And so when the question came to me, that do we still incur that late fee, the answer is yes. There's one exemption, and then the second one thereafter, it needs to be paid and has been paid by others. So we're being consistent, if you will, across the Marina. The other point, though, that Ms. James made is she's alluding to some emails, and you will see them in your package. And during the course of those emails, there was some unprofessional behavior on behalf of staff, and that is, I apologize to you directly for that. That is not our standard, and those employees have been, have received that exact feedback from their direct supervisors. We follow a progressive discipline policy, and that is, the first discussion is verbal, the second is written, and the third is, you know, moving forward on action, whether it's suspension or termination. And so I did find the emails inappropriate, and as I said, they have been counseled by their supervisors, and I apologize to you directly for that, those email exchanges.
Okay. Anyone else wish to come forward? All right, we'll move on then to action items. Second reading of Ordinance 23-05, Third Amended Fenway Hotel Development Agreement. Jennifer, would you please read Ordinance 23-05 by title only?
Ordinance 23-05, an ordinance of the City of Dunedin, Florida approving and authorizing execution of the Third Amended Fenway Hotel Development Agreement between the City of Dunedin and the Taoist Tai Chi Society of the United States of America, Inc., as successors by merger to TTCS-USA Title Holding Corporation and Main Sail Fenway Hotel, LLLP, repealing any conflicting ordinances or parts thereof and providing for an effective date. That was Ordinance 23-05, read by title only.
Thank you, Jennifer. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Commissioner Frainy, Vice Mayor Torongo, thank you. Joey?
Good evening, Joseph P. Tauschberg, behalf of the Community Development, and tonight we have the second reading of Ordinance 23-05 for the Fenway Hotel Development Agreement. Project location is 453...
Is that better? Okay, sorry about that. The address is 453 Edgewater Drive. I'm going to do somewhat of an abbreviated, because there has been basically no change between first and second reading, so I'll go through the presentation very briefly. Certainly would be available to answer any questions.
Sure.
But by way of background, this again is the Third Amended Hotel Development Agreement for the Fenway. The first occurred in 2015. The Second, First Amendment was in 2017, a Second Amendment in 2018, and we've been working with the Fenway folks pretty much since shortly thereafter on this Third Amended Agreement. After lots of discussion and some back and forth and negotiations with the Fenway folks, we brought the ordinance and the amendment to the LPA in May. They unanimously recommended approval with a minor correction. And then ultimately, this was tabled and then brought back for, as you recall, first reading in September, where the City Commission did approve first reading, and we went into a lot of the supplemental information and background, how we arrived at the negotiated terms of the agreement. Again, by way of background, real briefly, there's really four major areas that were amended. The first have to do with the monument sign, a shade tent, which is a temporary tent, a major special event tent, and that includes a parking plan to go along with that, and then the event hours. There was some discussion about the monument sign location. We demonstrated at first reading, and here's the same exhibit where the sign's proposed location, and I believe Mr. Collier indicated they'd even sort of mocked it up out there. I think one of the commissioners had a concern about that location, and they're comfortable that with its location, and it does meet all the dimensional standards for sight limitations, visibility triangle, and clear sight line. The sign itself will be set back 10 feet from both property lines. It's a 16-foot wide by 6-foot tall sign, double-sided. It will be backlit, and it'll be on a timer. This was the mock-up of the sign. You can see the architectural style. The sign itself is in keeping with the Fenway, and you can see the dimensions, again, 16 feet overall in length and 6 feet overall in height at its highest point. Moving to the second element, that's the shade tent by the pool in the rear of the property, near the parking area at the rear of the property, or the west side of the, excuse me, east side of the property. This is a 20 by 50 shade tent.
Ordinance 23-05, an ordinance of the City of Dunedin, Florida approving and authorizing execution of the Third Amended Fenway Hotel Development Agreement between the City of Dunedin and the Taoist Tai Chi Society of the United States of America, Inc. as successors by merger to TTC-S-USA Title Holding Corporation and Main Sail Fenway Hotel, LLLP, repealing any conflicting ordinances or parts thereof and providing for an effective date. That was ordinance 23-05, read by title only.
Thank you, Jennifer. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Commissioner Franny, Vice Mayor Torga, thank you. Joey.
Deputy Joseph P. Cosgrove, behalf of the Community Development. And tonight, we have the second reading ordinance 23-05 for the Fenway Hotel Development Agreement. Project location is 453.
Is that better? Okay, sorry about that. The address is 453 Edgewater Drive. I'm going to do somewhat of an abbreviated, because there has been basically no change between first and second reading. So I'll go through the presentation very briefly. Certainly would be available to answer any questions.
Sure.
But by way of background, this again is the Third Amended Hotel Development Agreement for the Fenway. The first occurred in 2015. The second, First Amendment was in 2017, a Second Amendment in 2018. And we've been working with the, the Fenway folks pretty much since shortly thereafter on this Third Amended Agreement. After lots of discussion and some back and forth and negotiations with the Fenway folks, we brought the, the ordinance and the amendment to the LPA in May. They unanimously recommended approval with a minor correction. And then ultimately, this was, was tabled and then brought back for, as you recall, first reading in September where the City Commission did approve first reading. And we went into a lot of the supplemental information and background, how we arrived at the negotiated terms of the agreement. Again, by way of background, real briefly, there's really four major areas that were amended. The first have to do with the Monument sign, a shade tent, which is a temporary tent, a major special event tent, and that includes a parking plan to go along with that, and then the event hours. There was some discussion about the Monument sign location. We demonstrated at first reading, and here's the same exhibit where the signs proposed location. And I believe Mr. Collier indicated they'd even sort of mocked it up out there. I think one of the commissioners had a concern about that location. And they're comfortable that, with its location, and it does meet all the dimensional standards for site limitations, visibility triangle, and clear sight line. The sign itself will be set back 10 feet from both property lines. It's a 16-foot wide by six-foot tall sign, double-sided. It will be backlit and it'll be on a timer. This was the mock-up of the sign. You can see the architectural style, the sign itself is in keeping with the Fenway. And you can see the dimensions, again, 16 feet overall in length and six feet overall in height at its highest point. Moving to the second element, that's the shade tent by the pool in the rear of the property, near the parking area at the, at the rear of the property or the west side of the, excuse me, east side of the property. This is a 20 by 50 shade tent to be located in that area. The approval of this element would expire in two years. And that would leave enough time for the Fenway folks to look for a permanent solution where they would construct a more permanent shade structure back there. This is that, just another area. We can see the location of the, the tent itself next to the pool. The next element is the major special tent, event tent. This is the one that will be on the front lawn from time to time for major events. It will be located generally in the location you see here on the site plan. And so it will require a permit each and every time there's a tent installed. And that permit can be conditioned with reasonable conditions such as the direction of the speakers, staff for directing traffic, and other reasonable items. Along with that special event tent, you also have a parking plan that gets essentially activated when, when you have that type of event. Per the agreement, the Main Sail folks have to provide 70 spaces at a, at a minimum when they have either 100 or more people or it involves a tent, regardless of the number. They have to notify the city. And as we discussed last time, they do have a parking agreement with the Taoist folks for their property just to the east. And in total, the, they would have the availability of 95 spaces. When you look at the off-street valet parking spaces, the on-street residential parking permit spaces, and then the 66 spaces that are available through the agreement. And then if there is a, an event of 175 people or more, they would have to get the sheriff's office involved, having officers out there for traffic control and crowd control. Briefly, here's the site plan we provided at the first reading. You can see there's a property line separating the, the two parcels. And the blue parking is the existing off-street parking for the hotel itself. The valet parking is shown along the driveway coming in off of Lockley and Lynnhurst. You can see there's 14 spaces there, sort of running along that driveway and, and along where the Port of Kosher is. There's 15 spaces in the parking permit program available to them. And then there's the two parking areas with, as, that are part of the agreement where you have 46 spaces available in one area, 20 spaces in the other area, available through the agreement year-round. The, in total, the parking available with everything shown here would be 179 spaces available. And then the final element that was agreed to was that regardless of the size of the event, they agree to stop external music by 10:00 PM on Sundays. Again, the recommendation of your local planning agency was to recommend approval with that change to the sign, which has been made and discussed previously. And of course, staff is recommending approval of ordinance 23-05 in the Third Amended Fenway Hotel Development Agreement. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
This is called a development agreement. How long is this in effect for?
I believe the city attorney will, will confirm this, but it's, if this amendment is executed, it would be 10 years beyond the, the effective date of the amendment.
And these, these amendments or this, this third, this third go-around for us is really something that we wish to have, that we asked for and, and was, was arrived at for concerns that we had, correct?
I, I think the initial, the initial, you know, I, I wasn't that involved in the initial. I can tell you, you know, each one of these amendments, I assume, were, were a mutual agreement between both parties, both needing, needing to have the agreement or wanting to have the agreement. And I, I would assume that would have been the case for the original back in 2015 and of course, each amendment since then.
I believe, Jennifer, you can, Jennifer Bramley. I believe it was the Fenway that asked for it because they needed the sign. And in order to get the sign, we came back and said we wanted to work out a better parking thing. And I think that's where it all started.
The sign end originally years ago before COVID, we were looking at, at that dock, rebuilding the dock.
Right. I do think it was them that actually asked for it initially. That's just my recollection.
And some of the things that were put in there were on our initiative from a parking standpoint and turned and became agreeable to the Fenway because they wanted to be a responsible party, as I understand it. I, I'm not taking a side here. I'm just making us aware of, of what's transpired here and why we have a third one here. And some of these are sunset, sunsetted. For example, the, the canvas material is going to be used for the coverage. And at some point in time, they'll come back to us. That's only for a certain period of time, correct? And they'll have to come back. And they'll have to come back and get a permit to do whatever else they want to do next. And that would go before.
Yes, if this, yeah, to answer your question, yes. So if the shade tent, within that two-year period, they come up with a permanent solution on what they would like to build back there, yes, they would, they would come back through, through the, and amend the agreement accordingly. And of course, get a building permit for that.
And just for clarity's sake, it's sort of been meetings between some of the organizations within, within our own committees, et cetera, concerning this. And that's, this has been, had been, has been well-received, as far as I understand. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe the Edgewater Drive Advisory Committee did review and met with Mr. Collier, had a number of concerns they expressed. We, I think we covered those at first reading. There was a number of things that were, were asked about, the, the noise being, stopping at a certain time and pointing the speakers and just being a good, good neighbor. And I think they did come to an understanding that that was, that, that, you know, that this agreement or this amendment met those, met those requirements and those asks from, from both the neighborhoods and the committee on behalf of the neighborhood they represent.
And lastly, if, I think lastly, if we, if we, if, for example, we didn't have this development agreement concerning the tent in the front of the hotel. If the hotel wished to have a tent in front of the hotel, that's something that they could ask for, correct?
Correct, yes.
Pretty much anybody can ask for.
Yes.
A tent. And, and then it's up to, it's up to certain departments within here, including the city manager, to, to approve that activity. So it's just a part of this agreement, as I understand it, I'm, I'm asking, that, that makes this as good as what it can be, I, I would, I would think, for a community that's attempting to welcome something like the Fenway in, into their, into their community as opposed to doing, having had something else done differently with the property? Is that sort of?
Yeah, I think, I think probably the best way I, I could explain it is absent the agreement, they would be able to request a tent. It's a granted temporary use in our code and they would be able to, you know, be, just like, as you, as you mentioned, Vice Mayor, anybody can ask for, you know, get a tent. And we would review that based on its merits and questions of parking. And the logistics would come up, but, but that would be something that would be allowed absent a development agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Gao, any questions?
No, ma'am, I'm good.
Commissioner Franny, any questions?
No, I have nothing.
No? Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak to this item, please feel free to do so. I see Fenway and Taoist Tai Chi representation here. You guys got nothing? Okay, I guess everybody's in support. All right, we'll come back to the maker of the motion, Commissioner Franny.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we've talked about this a lot. I mean, it got tabled for a while so that everybody could talk more. And I think we've come to a good place. I was just jotting down a few comments just to review history a little bit. Of course, it's a historic building that was falling apart in the middle of a neighborhood. And that was a really bad thing. And Main Sail came along thanks to, you know, working with Taoist Tai Chi to save and preserve this historic building. And, and it was amazingly done. I mean, literally stripped from the inside out and redone to preserve it. Fenway is a treasure to our community. That being said, you got residents in a hotel side by side. Their neighbors and communication and TLC are, are huge to that. So I think this agreement kind of, it strikes a great balance. And it also resets the bar on the importance of continuing to have that good communication and that great TLC between Fenway and the neighbors. So I fully support it. I, I think it's a good, it's a good balance. Thank you.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes, I'll repeat some of the comments I made during the first reading. I, I really do think this is, this is exactly how an agreement like this would come together. You have an iconic hotel in the Fenway. You have a management staff with Main Sail that worked with the community, worked with the city, and worked with the Edgewater Advisory Committee to really reach an agreement, I think, that everybody was happy with. We had a lot of residents during the first reading. And the feedback that I got from that meeting was, is that, you know, I think everybody was pretty, pretty happy with how this all worked out. And I just, I just believe that everything should be this collaborative and this, this good, being this good for the community. So anyway, those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. Pretty much what everybody said already. But I will say that what I actually like is that back in June, when we were getting ready to put this on our agenda, we got a lot of communication from our residents that live in that area. And, you know, no one had a problem with postponing it to talk about it more and to make it better. And to me, that's a really good responsive government and makes me proud to be a part of it. Gentlemen, thank you for your hard work. Taoist Tai Chi, I want to thank you again for your willingness to work on those parking in the back because it really has been a problem. And I think you've really brought forward a, a strong solution for everyone. Thank you for being in our community. We need more banquet space over there. Anyway, all right, roll call vote, please. Commissioner Gao?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Torga?
Aye.
Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Mayor Buzowski? Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Hey, Jennifer, can I ask you a quick question? Maybe it's George and Joey. Sure. I know we had talked about doing just one reading on development agreements, well, LPA and one commission reading. When is that going to happen? Because I mean.
We have, there are some items, as you know, that we're bringing forward.
In the land.
Head of the land development.
Is this one of them, please?
Yeah.
Yeah. Especially if something happens with Gateway again.
Right, yes.
I just think it's so much easier. Okay, thank you. It just seems to be a simple one. All right, then we have the proposed agenda for October 19th commission meeting. I see Jennifer's review is on there.
Yeah.
Bring your popcorn.
So everybody in the world needs to be at this meeting. I'm just kidding. It's just a reminder for any of my colleagues that haven't done it yet, including me.
You know, can I just say, like, it's never really a good thing to be almost the only item.
I know.
You know, so you need to pack this meeting. You want a tired commission that's ready to just wrap it up.
I'm going to go agenda item hunting after this meeting.
And feel free. Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the October 19th?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker and Commissioner Gao, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Jennifer says she has an informational item for us.
I do.
Okay. She says it's a good one.
Oh, good, I like that. Well, it's just kind of a fun one.
What, what did you get?
So, not me, us.
What did we get?
Before I put this in our trophy case, this is from the Masonry Association of Florida.
For what?
It is the 2023 Masonry Excellence Awards winner, Brick and Stone, Commercial Institutional for our City Hall.
Oh.
Lovely?
Yeah.
So I wanted to show it to you before we put it in our trophy case because I think you might say, what is that?
Yeah, well, and, and you may also notice that I had Lindsay bring down all the city gifts that I had in my office. So you'll see that big ship out there and a couple. So it makes it look a little bit better.
It does.
You know, because it gives it some dimension. So, you know, those are some cool things. And then we'll probably get another one when we go to Scotland next year that we can put there. But I think that's a great place for those kinds of things because they are citywide things and they shouldn't be stuck up in the mayor's office where nobody can see them.
So this is actually our second one, as you know, for, for New City Hall. The first was Best of the Bay then. And I know that, I know that, that.
You can make a whole shelf for City Hall.
Well, Harvard Jolly is going to be submitting for architectural awards. And it's right that they should do it. We wouldn't do it, they would do it. So we're looking at, at that. I asked Ward, you know, if they were going to do that, and he said yes. So I'm looking forward to some, some additional review of New City Hall.
Cool, we can have a whole cubby.
Yeah, a whole cubby, shelf is better.
Whole cubby for, for City Hall, very good. Anybody else have any informational items that we need to know about? I know we have the tapping of the official keg of Oktober Beer Fest tomorrow night. That's pretty darn important. We get to partake at Dunedin Brewery. But I saw this year, Caledonia, Woodright, and several others are doing their own Oktober Fests this month. So I hadn't really seen, well, they're, they're not the same kinds of things. But I mean, I hadn't seen that in the past. Maybe they've done it, I just hadn't noticed it. But the big four-day event has started tonight, so you can go to the brewery tonight. But, but the tapping of the official keg is tomorrow night.
Basically drank every day in Dunedin, I guess.
Well, you don't need Oktoberfest for that. And that's it. Anything else? How was your trip?
It was very good.
You were gone a long time. We missed you.
Yeah, thank you. I missed all of you too.
And we antagonized Jorge on the dais a little bit. I did.
I hope you did.
Of course I did.
No, Mayor, I, you know, I'm grateful, I'm very grateful to all of you for allowing me to attend the International City Management Association Meeting in Austin, Texas. I get a lot out of the meeting. It, it's, it's an arduous meeting, actually. It's tiring, it's all day. And then, you know, into the evening where, you know, several of the states and the regions meet together as well. So, but I'm very grateful that I'm able to go because it, as I said, it really is a very good meeting. And I thank Jorge Quintas for acting city manager because I know, you know, he's still doing his deputy city manager, you know, jobs. Then he's got the city manager position as well. So he's gone home this evening, and I'm not sure if he's coming back tomorrow, but.
I don't blame him.
I'm just kidding. No, I'm grateful to Jorge and to Donna and, and everybody in the city manager's office for holding it together.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. All right, thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.